Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for January the 10th, 2019. And may we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
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 Here. Be advised, Commissioner Schreiber is excused. And at this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Thank you. At this time, we have announcements. The first one will be an announcement honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. memorial service and adoption of Resolution Number 19-001, which reads as follows. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was a man committed to peaceful coexistence where all men would be free from racism, bigotry, and discrimination, and whereas many people look to the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. as a source of inspiration for promoting harmony, cooperation, and understanding, and whereas the third Monday in January has been declared a national holiday, and on that day, January 21st, 2019, Abington Township will conduct a memorial service at 12 noon, which will be attended by civic, religious, school, and government leaders, and whereas Abington Township is here within honoring the Honorable Kelly B. Hodge Esquire as the 2019 recipient of the Martin Luther King Memorial Award. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township does hereby proclaim January 21st as Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and encourages all interested citizens to participate in the Township Memorial Service resolved this 10th day of January 2019. I will have more details of the program at the conclusion of our agenda. I have one other announcement to make. If you have any technical devices, or phones, or anything of that nature, could you please turn them off at this time? I have a brief announcement that since there were no committee meetings in January, public comment will be taken after each agenda item and consent agenda items as listed on the agenda this evening. All right? At this time, we have a presentation, and I'd like to call on First Commissioner Drew Rothman, also State Representative Ben Sanchez, and Congresswoman Madeline Dean's office has Representative Megan is here to make a presentation to Jason Lieberman and Eagle Scout.
I think it's Boy Scout night. I was just late getting up here because I was speaking with a group in the back. It's really an honor to present this to Jason. To me, Jason is just a very inspirational young guy, even so much where he's one of the few people that's ever been allowed to babysit my children. So I don't know if that is a good or bad thing, you know, you can tell me that later. But Jason, I want to read this to you. We as a township are inspired by people like you and your dedication to community, environment, and family. So I'll read this. A proud community salutes you on achieving the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. In recognition of your contribution to our community by working with the Sisters of Holy Redeemer to create plots for vegetable gardens, to help provide fresh, healthy food to local residents in need, inspired by your passion developed in your environmental studies, environmental science studies at Abington Senior High School, your awareness of food sensitivity issues, desire to increase awareness for sustainable agriculture, and your continuing mission while in Troop 72 to help local residents. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township hereby awards this certificate of commendation to Jason Lieberman. We appreciate all of your hard work, and join your family, friends, and fellow members of Boy Scout Troop 72 in extending our congratulations to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Jason, this was a very special one because as you know, I know you well and your family. In addition to your stellar childcare duties, which many of us know, you've always inspired me with your maturity. And I remember in a instance, you were volunteering in a capacity, and I actually learned that you were walking several miles to volunteer there, and I found that a remarkable testament to a young person that would, you know, forego a ride and get there. And it was very, very touching. And I've seen, I know you've gone on to college now, and you're at Hofstra in Long Island, and hopefully enjoying that, and had the opportunity to discuss that with your parents, and it sounds great, and pleased to see you on track, and quite an achievement here. And we have a citation from the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I'll read it to you as well. Whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania takes great pride in recognizing Jason Lieberman, who has displayed steadfast commitment to the ideals and time-honored traditions of the Boy Scouts of America by attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, an accomplishment of the highest magnitude. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest advancement rank that can be reached by a Boy Scout. In achieving this praiseworthy distinction, Jason completed all portions of the Eagle Award Program, which help a scout to develop in the areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. To fulfill the community service requirement, Jason worked with the Sisters of the Holy Redeemer to design and build vegetable gardens to provide fresh produce to residents of the community. And whereas through initiative and by his personal example, Jason is a living testament to the virtues of duty and citizenship that he has so genuinely and readily displayed. He is the son of Adam and Valerie Lieberman and a member of Troop 72 in Abington. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania applauds Jason Lieberman upon earning the rank of Eagle Scout, affirmatively states that he truly exemplifies the admirable spirit and essence of the Boy Scouts of America, extends best wishes for continued leadership and service to others, and directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by me, on January 1st, 2019, be transmitted to you, Jason Lieberman of Huntington Valley, Pennsylvania. Congratulations.
Congresswoman Dean regrets that she couldn't be here tonight to congratulate you personally, but she asked me to pass along her congratulations to you, Jason, and to your parents for this very notable achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, and to thank you for your community service and your stewardship to Abington and to our community. So on behalf of the United States Congress, I present this citation to you. Congratulations.
Jason, did you want to say a few words or introduce your family or any other scout members while they're here?
Well, first, I just want to say thank you very much to my mom and dad. I really appreciate your support over all the years I've been in scouting, also to my brother, who is following in my footsteps, and also to all the younger scouts I see in the room achieving. Earning the rank of Eagle was probably one of the best things I ever did as, you know, when I was younger. So I would definitely say you can do it. It's not always easy, but taking the easy path in life is not easy. It's not fun. So I would say definitely go and achieve the rank of Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, sir. And thank you to his family and to the other scout members who are here this evening. Drew, did the members, the scout members want to leave the meeting at this time, or would they rather stay?
I think they need to stay for a little longer.
Okay.
Before they're allowed to go.
Okay.
I'm sure they'd love to have to sit with me for an hour or two.
Okay. So at this time, we'll move forward with our agenda, and at this time, we come to the point in our program where we accept public comment on agenda items. Public comment from items on the agenda, and as I, I'm sorry. Right. And as I announced earlier, since we did not have committee meetings, we're going to accept public comment after each agenda item.
So how about the consent agenda items?
I said that also in the beginning.
Okay. So there'll be a place for consent agenda items?
Okay. So at this time, is there anyone that wants to make a comment on anything on the agenda? I'm sorry.
Hold on. Right, okay.
It could be any item that follows after this part of the meeting.
Pardon me, Kaki, we're going to take, we're just going to move on, and as each agenda item, as it comes forward, you can come and speak at that time. All right. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes, and the consent agenda is listed on the agenda.
Thank you, President Luker. We'll take them one at a time since we're looking for public, we're affording public comment after each agenda item. So the first is, I motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners' special meeting, fiscal year 2019 budget of December 13th, 2018, and the December 13th, 2018 regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners, from staff? Any comments from any residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And we have FC 04011019, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for November 2018 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance in travel expense reports were $0 and $536.82 respectively. 11-month expenses totaled $34,263.52, and I so move.
It's been moved to seconded. Comments from commissioners, staff, residents? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 05011019, motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-002, authorizing the Finance Director and his/her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by First Class Township Code, and I so move.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners, from staff, any from residents? There are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 06011019, motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-003, authorizing the disposition of certain finance office records as set forth in Exhibit A in the agenda, and I so move.
It's been moved to seconded. Comments from commissioners, staff, residents? Name and address, please.
In three minutes. Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Do these records that are being disposed of, are any of these records related in any way to the Colonade, to the 100 York Project, and to any of the peripheral lawsuits, including the whistleblower lawsuit involved with that? Are any of these documents in there? Have they been culled from documents that are being disposed of?
All right. Well, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I mean, you can file a right-to-know request with the Township Manager's Office, and if any of those documents are part of those that are being scheduled for destruction, they would be pulled out. But that's the way you would handle it, is by handling a right-to-know. I don't think anybody's going to be able to answer your question tonight.
I was going to say, those particular, that particular, the outstanding lawsuits.
File a right-to-know.
Regarding, okay. So first of all, you should be recusing yourself from this question since you're the object of the whistleblower suit. Okay?
What I, right.
Indeed. He should be recusing himself from this matter. No, he has no obligation to recuse. Even as the object of the whistleblower suit in that matter?
This Lehman, this Lehman.
Okay.
Not a conversation for discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. So the question is, I shouldn't have to file a right-to-know? There are still outstanding lawsuits regarding that subject, and you have an obligation to keep the records for outstanding lawsuits on ongoing investigations and things that are not cleared up yet. So I will file a right-to-know right now, okay? And I will also ask, please, so you're about to rule on that. So I would like you to rule on that, allowing my right-to-know for any records that are in there. So that they should not be disposed of.
I think you've been given an answer. Go ahead. Move on.
Okay. So I'm asking you not to dispose of them until my right-to-know is satisfied. That's what I'm asking. Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes the consent agenda items for this evening.
Thank you, President Klein. Did you approve the minutes?
We did the minutes, yeah.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to unfinished business, and I'd like to call on the Administrative Code on Land Use Committee Commissioner Ben Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item this evening, ACL 1. This is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2162, an ordinance of Abington Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the Abington Township zoning ordinance of 2017 as amended by amending Article 7 AO Apartment Office District, adding H12 senior apartment units as a use permitted by conditional use in AO Apartment Office District by amending Article 21 Use Regulations, adding H12 senior apartment units as a use, and by amending Article 23 Parking and Transportation to include use H12 senior apartment units. And an ordinance of Abington Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, enacted pursuant to the First Class Township Code and the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, amending the Abington Township Code and the official zoning map of Abington Township to rezone a certain tract of real property from CS Community Service District and R3 Medium Density Residential District to AO Apartment Office District, to be considered at a special meeting beginning at 6:30 PM on January 31st, 2019, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff?
I did have one question.
Okay. Vice President Klein.
Is it my understanding that they'll be going to the Planning Commission on the 22nd?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And it'll be sent back to the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and the ordinance, which contains some revisions from the prior hearing, will also be read advertised, and I believe it's already on the website.
And it's the intention at the hearing on the 31st that they would present the changes to the ordinance?
That is correct.
And then we would continue on with the public comment process.
And continue, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that clear? All right. Any comments from any other commissioners? There are none? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kaki Evans. I live on Lindsay Lane. Our Environmental Advisory Council has really spent considerable amount of time on this, and we will be coming with recommendations. We were, for instance, the green roof portion of it was reduced to 25%, and my understanding is in the current township zoning, it's 50%. And I want to tell you that we have other concerns. We did, unfortunately, we waived our right to be a party status, but one of the things we ended our last letter to the Planning Commission is that we would like to advocate for a design charrette to bring all the interested stakeholders. Not only do we believe in respectful, open, honest, respectful communications at all times, but we also believe that with communication, all things are possible, and I think we can accomplish something here. So look for our letter, take it seriously. We do feel that our environmental concerns are not being addressed, and we'll, we worked, we look forward to working with everybody and all the stakeholders, including especially the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Although the density was addressed at the last meeting, the density is not the main issue in this. And the residents in the township, including those that were most direly impacted, have been misled in a dozen different ways.
Mrs. Lehman, can I cut you off? I don't mean to do that, but this is a motion to advertise.
Yes, it's a motion to advertise.
That's all.
And I am, and I am.
We're not taking any comments.
I am making my comments about your advertising, okay? So I'm telling you that the residents have been misled. They were sent to Planning Commission meetings, and recently to a hearing, where the focus was always on one project and one use. This is not about one project and one use. This is about altering our code, which number one, sets a precedent for altering the code for many other developments, and number two, is being altered in such a way that is so blatantly leaving us open to lawsuits. Recently, when the developer, who didn't even know that Valley Glen was included, found out it was included, instead of notifying Valley Glen and properly bringing them into the picture, they instead put into the new ordinance that the hospital had to be in Abington. So you're sending out a motion to advertise for a change to your text amendment that so easily would have a lawyer coming to say, well, if your purpose was to provide easy access for seniors to hospitals, why would you require the hospital had to be in Abington when we have a hospital right across the street from this very available development? That's a lawsuit waiting to happen. And when it does, it's density that is expanding in this township that is waiting to happen, and that's only one, I mean, the 300-foot frontage? What would that, why would a senior residence have to have a 300-foot frontage? Another lawsuit waiting to happen. 400 feet from a transportation? What if I'm 450? Another one. And we have sections right in my own area of 35 acres and more.
Right.
That have never been considered because nobody focused people on what this was about. It was about transforming the whole township by changing the code.
Okay. Your three minutes are up, Mrs. Lehman.
So please do not advertise this.
It's a motion to advertise.
Please do not advertise this.
The applicant is entitled to a right to due process, and he's asking for a continuation, and he's going to get it received this evening.
He's had more than due process.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
The residents of the township need some due process.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none? Any other comments? I'm sorry. Okay. Hearing none. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee for this evening.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll move to new business, Public Works Committee, calling on Commissioner Drew Rothman, Chair.
Thank you, President Luker. We have one item of new business, Public Works, this evening. PW 01011019, motion to adopt Resolution 19004, requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used for sidewalk connections, Meeting House Road and Fox Chase Road, and authorizing Richard J. Manfredi, Township Manager, to execute all documents and agreements between the Board of Commissioners and PennDOT to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. And I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners, from staff, comments from residents?
Mr. President, just to note, this is another very important final piece of the puzzle for the grant part of this kind of two-to-three-part section that will bring sidewalks, a lot of walkability, pedestrian improvements, and some intersection improvements to that whole corridor, which basically goes from Jenkintown Borough. This part's a little further east, but it goes all the way, and will ultimately connect things up with many of our various parks, and probably all the way towards Lorimer Park and the county bike trail there. So hopefully, everybody can support this. This is, you know, going to be transformative, to say the least. So thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Rothman.
And if I just could, since you're not going to be at future meetings, thank you very much, Commissioner Sanchez, for the work that you've done on this. This is, this is really going to be wonderful for the people on that side of town and anybody else that comes to visit. So thanks.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee agenda.
Thank you, sir. Public Affairs Committee Commissioner John Spiegelman, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, Public Affairs has one item of business, PA 01, and that consists actually of two motions. A motion to award the construction contract for the street reconstruction at the 2200 block of Parkview Avenue to Associated Paving Contractors Incorporated as the apparent low bidder in the amount of $139,750, and a motion to approve and authorize, excuse me, approve and authorize additional consultant work to complete the survey and stakeout at the 2200 block of Parkview Avenue in the amount of $1,235, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Comments from residents? Okay. Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry.
That's all right. This is HUD money that we're using for this?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Staff? Any comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, Vice President Stephen Klein, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for his report this evening. Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, everyone. Our first reports on the amounts of monies received by the various departments and deposited into Republic Bank for the month of December, which totaled $1,0528,220 compared to last year, there was a decrease of $258,199. But if you look to the year-to-date, which is the most telling story of it all, we collected a total of $63,809,560 compared to last year of $62,759,63, which is an increase of approximately As for the real estate taxes collected in the month of December, which was the last month that I was allowed to collect them, and after December 31st, they go up to the county to be leaned upon if they cannot be collected. I close the books for collecting for the month of December, $208,707, with the year-to-date $25,531,198, and the balance to be collected of $1,558,827. This month was a month of December was an increase of, excuse me, $139,8643. And might I add, for those that may be here or those watching on TV, that after January 15th, when I go up to the county, anything unpaid will be then collected by the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau, and if anybody receives a letter from them that have unpaid taxes, they better answer that letter. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Then we have FC 01011019, motion to approve investments for the month of November as previously circulated to the Board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $685,000. Interest rate yield ranged from 2.7% to 2.85%, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners, from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 02011019, motion to approve the November expenditures as previously circulated to the Board. In the
to the board in the amount of $2,751,453, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,883,440.80, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2019, and iso move.
It's been moved and seconded. Yes. Any comments from commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Any comments from staff or residents? Thank you. Okay.
And then the motion for FC 03011019, as I previously had read off, an iso move.
If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 03101011019, motion to approve the clearing fund, deferred revenue expense activity
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? From staff and/or residents?
and petty cash balances for the month of November as previously circulated to the
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
board.
The motion passes.
Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of November 2018 were $961.83 And that concludes the Finance Committee's agenda. and $20,650.20 respectively.
Okay. That concludes our formal agenda, and at this time, we'll open the floor for public
Deferred revenue, expense, receipts, and disbursements for the month of November 2018
comment.
Now, I didn't know if you were going to do public comment.
were $240 and $11,256 respectively, and iso move.
I could have made it at the end of the last one. So, on the last issue, you can see how you fuss over small amounts of money.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
So my comment is that we have a budget that not only is laid out like the IRS lays out
Correction. On the previous item, we should have had a roll call, correct?
We go back.
Okay, let's, before we vote on this last item, could we have a roll call on item
our taxes and all of those statements, but we have a budget that has millions of dollars
FC 02011019? Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
going back and forth between the school and the township that are out of sight of the
Brodsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
DePlacido?
Yes.
Sanchez?
taxpayers.
Yes.
There is no way that any expenditures are supposed to be out of sight of the taxpayers.
Tom San?
Yes.
Trigoff?
Yes.
Seigman?
Yes.
I would like you to review that. I would like you to get rid of that allowance to just waive services. Thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and millions of dollars are out of sight of the taxpayer-paying public. So please change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. If there are none, we'll have closing comments from commissioners. At this time, I'm going to deviate from our normal and call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez first.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the indulgence for this, one of my last meetings here. And as you know, President Luker, I sent you a letter earlier today, which I will read for the public here and my colleagues on the board. Dear President Luker, it is with mixed emotions that I write to you to formally notify you of my intent to announce my resignation as Ward Seven Commissioner during tonight's January 10, 2019, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. My resignation will be effective February 14, 2019, which is the date of our next regular board meeting, at which time I would expect the board will be in a position to appoint my successor during that meeting. This will allow me to continue, as necessary, my duties as Commissioner until February 14, 2019, and to minimize the time of any vacancy for Ward Seven. Serving the people of my hometown of Abington has been an incredibly fulfilling and rewarding experience, a truly distinct honor and high privilege entrusted to me by our voters. I look forward to continuing that public service as the state representative for all of Abington. While my duties may expand and differ somewhat from those of a Commissioner, please know that I will continue to work with the township to forever maintain and improve our beloved community. Sincerely, Ben Sanchez. And I wanted to add a little more to that letter in person, Mr. President, if I may.
Right.
First, a housekeeping item. We've had some folks step forward to express their interest in the vacancy that they had astutely anticipated I would create, and I thank them for that. If anyone else is interested, please feel free to send a resume to Manager Manfredi. I would recommend doing that quickly as time is short. Next, I wanted to thank Manager Manfredi as the boss and CEO of the township and all of the township staff. And here, I mean, everyone who works or volunteers for the township in any capacity, even the tax collector here would be included in that. Look around, Liz back there, that means you too, that I've had the pleasure of working with for the past five years. When folks are dedicated and love their community, it truly shows in their proud work and makes all the difference to the residents we serve. I can't even remember the number of times folks were complimented for going above and beyond the call of duty, but it far outweighed the complaints. I also wanted to thank Solicitor Mike Clark and his entire team for their guidance. The lawyer role's never easy, especially not in our complicated environment here, and Rudolph Clark has been stellar since day one. And to my colleagues on the board, my fellow commissioners, I want to personally thank you for your service to the community. While we often engage in what I'll call healthy and vigorous debate, I know we always seem to coalesce around what's best for the community. And this may get lost in today's world of soundbites, social media, and sometimes divisive rhetoric, but I know everyone who sits here takes this role seriously and as a labor of love, not personal gain. We often hear this is a thankless role, but I know that's not entirely true, as people by and large appreciate our service and sometimes even express it to us in the nicest of notes or comments. But I wanted to say how much I truly appreciate everyone on the board here's hard work and that I have all the faith you will continue it and keep our community moving in the right direction. And finally, again, to my colleagues here and everyone in the room, I'm so proud of our many accomplishments together in the past five years, from all the balanced budgets and fiscally sound strategies, to responsible and award-winning development projects, to pedestrian and recreational improvements, to solving problems, large and small, to coming together in the unfortunate, difficult, and trying times in our community, and to so many more positive, great things on the near horizon that will add to these accomplishments. I hope to remain with you all every step of the way. You know where to find me, and you will always have my friendship. Thank you all for this opportunity, and peace and love to all of you and yours. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.[1027.01][1027.01][applause]
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Closing comments, we'll start with Commissioner Tom Bowman.
No comment tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Dennis Sapon.
Ben, good luck, and it was nice working with you. I wish you a lot of luck in the future, my friend.
Thank you, Dennis.
Commissioner Cal Glesby.
Of course, I wish you good luck, Ben, my Glen Side neighbor, grew up near me.
Of course, thank you.
I wish you all the luck in the world, and I hope everyone has a wonderful 2019.
Thank you. Commissioner Veyhe.
I'll echo the regards, Ben. Good luck. Send my best to Mr. Zabel, who I think's sitting next to you.
Of course, yes, thank you.
And on another note, I want to just recognize our Fire Marshal, John Roar. We had some time to visit last week when there was a fire in my street, actually right next door. You know, I get to know the firefighters, the staff, and you never get to see them in action, and you don't really ever want to see them in the action. I swear, they were at the house within 30 seconds of this fire starting. That was in large part because of a neighbor, an attentive neighbor noticing it and calling it in. But I swear, there were 15 and 20 trucks on the street within 30 seconds. It was amazing. And the dedication, professionalism of the entire department, and Mr. Roar especially, was remarkable. So thank you, John. You do a great job, and I hope I never have to see you again on my street. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Veyhe. There was a very significant house fire in Ward 11 the day after New Year's, and the Abington Fire Department, the all-volunteer Abington Fire Department, especially Ward 11's own awesome Station 100, Abington Fire Company, they were on it. They got that blaze out, and the folks throughout Ward 11 and throughout the entire township have been so incredibly generous in donating to help the family that was affected by this. Folks can look at my newsletter or on my Facebook page for information about how to donate and contribute, but people have really have just been absolutely remarkable. I'm going to really try to get through this, get through it quickly. Commissioner Sanchez, State Representative Sanchez, you are one of the true good guys in this community and this Commonwealth. Well, thank you, because you're, I've become a better Commissioner for having you as a colleague. And I've become a better person for having you as a friend. I just have to keep telling myself, this isn't goodbye, it's just see you across the street. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Commissioner Coruswell.
How are you supposed to follow that? Congratulations, we will miss you. We look forward to meeting who takes your chair and gets to be the newest person instead of me, the newest person. I want to also share my appreciation, different scale than home fires, thank goodness, but I was wanting to say a thank you to the public works team. We have some new drainage down the street, and everyone who knows about it in our neighborhood is really thrilled because we're getting into ice season, and I think we're all really excited about the fact there will be no ice skating over in Ward 10. So thank you to our public works friends.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
I remembered to turn it on this time. Ben, best of luck.
Thank you.
We're expecting big things from you, and we know that you'll be a stellar state representative.
Thank you, Peggy.
And we will certainly miss you as Commissioner, that's for sure. I would just like to take a moment to talk about Abington Pal at our annual Keswick concert in April. We'll also be holding a raffle for, I want to get this absolutely right, two seats for every single show at the Keswick for a year. There'll be a lot more information about this. This poster will be everywhere we can post it, social media, websites, and this is a really exciting raffle and an opportunity for Abington Pal, and there will be a limited number of tickets, and we hope that everyone will participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to know, on the Keswick show, does that include meet and greets for the backstage?
If you win the ticket, if you win the raffle...
I don't need to win the raffle for the meet and greet. And how many original temptations? How many original temptations are left?
We'll arrange that just for you, Commissioner.
I don't need that, but thank you. How many original temptations are left? So that's what I want to know. Listen, on a more serious note, I actually wanted to wish everybody a happy new year for the brand-new year. Mr. Sanchez, Commissioner Sanchez, but now we can remove that, and we can now call you State Representative Sanchez with much pleasure. I thought about what I wanted to say this evening, and I'm not going to recount that last day before the election on Old Ford Road. That was a heck of a lot of fun, and I thank you for that. But over the time period, we've become very good friends, and I appreciate your guidance, your counsel, although maybe we may defer those relationships in a different way, define those relationships in a different ways, for many reasons. As we discussed, I wish you a lot of mazel, a lot of good luck in what you do. I know you'll do well with that. I know you'll do absolutely stellar for the community of Abington, as well as your complete entire 153rd. It's much appreciated. You've been a stellar individual to handle and work with in this community. As you step up into the larger stage, I would caution you and remind you to avoid mayhem at all costs, because you know that the world is circled with mayhem. So, but we appreciate that, and we wish you nothing but less. This is always here for you, and if you ever need something, I'm sure all the commissioners would echo what Commissioner Rothman wanted to say. We concur with everything that everybody said in terms of your good luck and best wishes for what you do next, and you will do great. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew Rothman.
Well, Ben, congrats again. It's been awesome working with you. From the conversations we had when I was considering getting involved, and the conversations after I was involved, and the conversations now that you'll be moving on to another level, they've all been valuable conversations, and I do really appreciate the fact that it was never a problem, or you never made it a problem if I didn't agree with you on something, even if it was, you know, something that you wanted to get accomplished. It's really the way that we should all handle our positions, and I know you'll be great in the next, the next level. And thank you for all that you're going to do for us as state rep. No problem. Two things, real quick. Number one, it is a troop one Abington that we have in the House tonight. I'm told this is the oldest troop in, well, these aren't the oldest, these are... You've got some lawyers in the room. I don't want to be too literal. But it was an honor to speak with you earlier, and we really have some bright futures from that group, so thank you, and thank you to Paul for your leadership of that group. If any of those kids or any others in Abington would like to be participants in East Abington Little League, we will have a in-house sign-up on February 2nd from 12 to 3 at the McKinley Fire Station. You can also sign up online. So, happy new year to everybody, and that's all I have. President Luker, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jimmy DePlacido.
Thank you, President Luker. Commissioner, State Representative, Concierge, and my friend, Ben Sanchez, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
It's awesome. I can't follow up after speaks, but wow.
You'll make me cry. Don't.
All right. Hopefully, this won't make you cry. When driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you, President Luker.
Thank you. Ben, is there anything you forgot to say you want to?
I'll forego, but, you know, thank you to everyone, of course.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Sanchez, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last year. You've been nothing but a mentor to me and a great friend, and I truly appreciate everything that we've discussed and agreed with, on, and disagreed on over the past year, and I wish you nothing but the best. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. But a pleasure.
A pleasure. Thank you, sir. Ward Six residents, we will be having a town hall on January 30th at 7:00 p.m. in the Edge Hill Fire Company. Main topic on the agenda will be discussing with Aqua PAs engineers the new filtration system that'll be going on to the North Hills well on Chelsea Avenue. We'll also be discussing a few other housekeeping items with various department heads in the township. So please join us, January 30th, 7:00 p.m. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. Ben, we've done a lot of heavy lifting together, been through a lot of battles, and you will be, I'll sorely miss you in those future battles, and so I appreciate all the work that you and I have worked together. Having neighboring wards, it's been important to have that relationship, and I valued it. I look forward to having you as a state rep, as somebody who would understand township, the municipality, and for another role that I play also in the county. I look forward to having somebody in the state rep's position that's, will be active and helpful. So, thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Look forward to working, continuing to work together.
Mr. Blumenthal, you had a comment.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you for being the one with the least amount of hair up here, other than myself. And I wanted to comment on your compliment of me that I will not, but I cannot reduce your taxes because you were so nice to me this evening. And I wanted to say one thing about Peggy Myers and the two seats. She has assured me of the fact that these seats will not be the regular Keswick Theater seats. These ones will be comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, I'll have a closing comment. When I read Resolution 19001 regarding Dr. Martin Luther King, I just wanted to go over some of the highlights of the program this year. We're going to have tributes by Overlook and Riddle Elementary Schools, and also Abington Junior High School. [inaudible 00:09:29]. We're going to have tributes by Overlook and Riddle Elementary Schools, and also Abington Junior High School. We're going to have tributes by Overlook and Riddle Elementary Schools, and also Abington Junior High School. We're going to have tributes by Overlook and Riddle Elementary Schools, and also Abington Junior High School.
Ben, we've done a lot of heavy lifting together, been through a lot of battles, and you will be, I'll sorely miss you in those future battles, and so I appreciate all the work that you and I have worked together. Having neighboring wards, it's been important to have that relationship, and I valued it. I look forward to having you as a state rep, as somebody who would understand township, the municipality, and for another role that I play also in the county. I look forward to having somebody in the state rep's position that's, will be active and helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Look forward to working, continuing to work together.
Mr. Blumenthal, you had a comment.
Two things, Ben. Thank you for being the one with the least amount of hair up here, other than myself. And I wanted to comment on your compliment of me that I will not, but I cannot reduce your taxes because you were so nice to me this evening. And I wanted to say one thing about Peggy Myers and the two seats. She has assured me of the fact that these seats will not be the regular Keswick Theater seats. These ones will be comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, I'll have a closing comment. When I read Resolution 19001 regarding Dr. Martin Luther King, I just wanted to go over some of the highlights of the program this year. We're going to have tributes by Overlook and Rado Elementary Schools and also Abington Junior High School. And a bit on the recipient this year, the Honorable Kelly B. Hodge Esquire. Just so you know, she is a lifelong resident of Abington Township, and she's the first African-American female appointed to the head of the District Attorney's Office in Philadelphia County. And she will be the recipient this year. And also, the recipient of the Special Recognition Award is a gentleman by the name of Mr. Bernard Griggs Jr., who's also raised in Abington and graduated from Abington High School, and he is the business representative of the Building Trades Council. And so that's a synopsis of what we're going to have on Monday, January 21st, at 12:00 noon at the high school. Lastly, Commissioner Sanchez, State Rep Sanchez, it's been a pleasure and an honor to know you, sir, for five years. I just wish the best for you. God bless, take care, and best wishes for you and your family. You're going to do a fine job moving up, and I hope your replacement is as good and as fine a gentleman as you've been for the Board of Commissioners at Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's no further business, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Is I moved?
Thank you. Thank you for attending, and thank you to the Boy Scouts.